We'll call the annual meeting in New Ulm City Council for January eighth, two thousand nineteen, four thirty P M. The order, first item on the agenda is oath of office for mayor and a couple councilmen.
All right. Start with the mayor. Mr. Mayor, would you stand up, please? Repeat after me. Raise your hand. I, Robert J. Boyzman.
I, Robert J. Boyzman.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And of the state of Minnesota.
And of the state of Minnesota.
And faithfully and impartially discharge.
And faithfully and impartially discharge.
The duties of the office of mayor.
The duties of the office of mayor.
Of the city of New Ulm.
Of the city of New Ulm.
And the county of Brown.
And the county of Brown.
And the state of Minnesota.
State of Minnesota.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Yay.
If you also raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Larry A. Mack.
I, Larry A. Mack.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Do support the Constitution of the United States.
And of the state of Minnesota.
And of the state of Minnesota.
And faithfully and impartially discharge.
And faithfully and discharge.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of fourth ward counselor.
Of fourth ward counselor.
Of the city council of said city of New Ulm.
Of the city council of the city of New Ulm.
And the county of Brown.
And the county of Brown.
And the state of Minnesota.
And the state of Minnesota.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Counselor Fisher, use your hand. I, Lisa K. Fisher.
I, Lisa K. Fisher.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And of the state of Minnesota.
And of the state of Minnesota.
And will faithfully and impartially discharge.
And will faithfully and partially discharge.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of second ward counselor.
Of second ward counselor.
Of the city council and city of New Ulm.
Of the city council and city of New Ulm.
And the county of Brown and state of Minnesota.
And the county of Brown and state of Minnesota.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll go on to item number two. The consent agenda items, what's your wishes?
I'll offer motion to approve those.
Second.
Second.
We got a motion, the second to approve the consent agenda items. Any discussion on any? See none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. No? Motion carries. Item three A. Consider motion confirming the two thousand nineteen appointments of the mayor. We have them in front of us. Do you have anything you want to say or anything on that, Rod?
Short one.
Short one?
So we'll have to do this again for at least one more.
All right.
During that, I'll offer motion to approve the two thousand nineteen appointments of the mayor.
Second.
We have a motion, the second. Any discussion? See none? All in favor, say aye.
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 No? Motion carries. Item three B. Consider motion approving the two thousand nineteen appointments of the city council. You also have those in front of you. If anybody.
This is the one that we have to fill the, Ward one and Ward two need to fill the airport commission. Get you names? Is that what you prefer, mayor?
Correct. I think Lisa's got one right, and I have to have one.
I do have one.
If there's anybody out there listening and want to volunteer for the airport commission, call one of us, because we do need somebody, and it is hard to find, so.
They are.
Appreciate what the mayor does for finding all the others, so. So anybody have any changes, or everybody's okay with the committees they're on?
I'm okay.
And we can just continue going forward on that?
I'm fine.
Remain the same?
All right.
I'll offer a motion approving the two thousand nineteen appointments to the, of the city council.
Second.
We have a motion, the second. Any more discussion? See none? All in favor, say aye.
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 No? Motion carries. Item four A. Consider motion approving issuance of a temporary on sale liquor license for the New Ulm area Catholic schools, and that's for January twenty-sixth, two thousand nineteen.
I'll move it.
Second.
We have a motion, the second. Any discussion? See none? All in favor, say aye.
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 No? Motion carries. Item four, let's see. Item four B. Consider motion to approve the issuance of a taxi license to David Schut.
I'll have the motion.
Second.
We have a motion, the second. Any discussion?
Do we have David Schut here? Does he want to talk about it all? He want to step up? And the other companies have all had a chance to talk a little bit about what they're going to do and what they're going to offer.
No, I'm just, I'm retired, and I just have been coming up here. I was working for Cato Cab, and when they decided to pull out of town, I asked if I could start coming up here, and Rick Com and Andy Reinhart and his wife Laura, they have been doing everything they can to try to get me to be able to stay here. It's more about the fun I have coming up here and joy I have doing, doing up here than it is the money, because there's not a lot of money to make in New Ulm, but the entertainment I get by picking people up and taking them home and appreciation they have, it's second to none. And I'm mostly up here on Friday and Saturday nights, but if a person calls from Mankato and wants me to come up here, I'll tell them I'll be here in about fifty minutes, and I come and pick them up. I don't charge anything for coming to New Ulm from Mankato. I charge five dollars loaded and two dollars a mile, and like I told them if they're going, you know, like to Surles or to out fifteen, twenty miles, I usually negotiate the price because it's a pretty good distance, and, or Hansville where I grew up, I'm not going to charge five and two going there. I'm probably going to take them there and visit with the people I know.
So that's one of the reasons we're on the top ten of the best U S A Today cities in America, because of our good people here that you enjoy hollering around.
Yeah, well, my mom lives up on one thirty-five Bianchi, and my sister lives up on South Highland.
Great, great.
Always go visit the relatives.
Yeah, I mean, and that's what I do if I, when I come into town, I go up there and visit with my mom and, and come down here. But, you know, the people are just wonderful, the way they've treated me since I come here, and I do Uber riding in Mankato, and I can make probably twice as much going there, but it's more fun to come here.
Glad to hear that.
Good to hear.
Thank you.
Do you hear that, Gary? Do you hear that, Gary? That's a sales thing for him. So you're going to have just your cab alone, one car.
Just one car.
And mostly weekends.
Just mostly weekends, and, you know, Oktoberfest and Bach Fest, I'd like to be able to come up here and do those, and like I say, there's a few people actually call me. There's one gentleman up here where I've been up here four and five times a week taking him where he needs to go.
Oh, really?
But it's very rare, and I don't charge anything for that. When I come up, I take him where he's going. I go visit my mom or go downtown and just visit with the people, and then go back and get him.
Sure.
So.
Well, welcome to town.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President, before you call the vote, just to confirm, the motion is to approve the issuance of the license to Mr. Schut for the period commencing today, ending June thirtieth, two thousand nineteen, subject to compliance with the city and state requirements. Correct.
So he'll have to apply for a new license on July first.
That's when their, the regular.
When they normally would come.
Right, yeah.
Normal time.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Do you have anything for me tonight?
Yep.
Thank you so much.
Any more discussion? See none? All in favor, say aye.
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 No? Motion carries. Thank you.
Oh, you're official.
Oh, you're late. All right. Five A. Public Safety Commission recommending no truck traffic on Washington Street between Sixteenth and Seventeenth North Street. Mr. Kayler, you got something on that?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. At their December sixth, two thousand eighteen meeting, the Safety Commission considered a request to restrict truck traffic on North Washington Street. You do have a, between Sixteenth and Seventeenth North, you do have an aerial photo that shows that area. It's basically the back of the old Runnings facility that's being used as a, I believe, a three M warehouse at this time. The west side of that street is single-family residential units. Couple of residential property owners came in and were somewhat frustrated with the truck traffic that they were experiencing. You can see from the aerial photo, there isn't driveway access from both Sixteenth and Seventeenth, so I think it would be doable, but that's their recommendation.
Okay, thank you. Any concerns on the council?
Was there any discussion with three M, just about asking if they would not drive on it before we implement a policy?
Personally, or from the Safety Commission, we did not have a discussion with the three M. One of the residents actually is employed by three M and indicated that he had several conversations with the, with them. I think part of the problem is some of the drivers don't actually work for three M, and they're going twenty-four hours a day. Sometimes it's my understanding they did cut back or attempt to cut back some of the hours, but they still seem somewhat frustrated with the situation.
I suppose they're bringing product in.
Yeah, and it's, and I don't know a lot about it, other than it's kind of just in time delivery, and when they need it, you got to go get it, so.
You know, and just another issue has been semis parking across the street from the houses, you know, to do overnights.
Yeah, and there's plenty of room on the other side of the building.
Correct.
You know, they got that big parking lot there, so.
You know, on that aspect, and, you know, a truck driver's going to come in, they're looking easiest way to turn, and if they miss the turn to parking lot, they're turning onto the street, and the street's, you know, narrow, also for safety concerns.
It's going to be somewhat tough to enforce unless they are, like you said, parked there. If they're just driving through there, by the time they call law enforcement.
Well, I mean, do you want.
But if they are parked there.
But I think for truck traffic, you know, if you've got baseball games, you know, on the other end on Seventeenth, you know, that's a concern with summertime, you know, so, I mean, they got access to your, to their property by both side streets, yeah, so.
Okay, I just wanted to.
I had a call from one of the property owners, and they are here, if we want to hear from them, as far as the whole issue with this truck traffic and the noise and what they have dealt with on that block when we allowed this conditional use permit. I kind of have a little concern if we might have brought some industrial traffic into a residential area, but I think maybe he should maybe tell what he's living with, and then we can kind of go from there.
Sure, okay. Just state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Dave Stodick. I live at sixteen oh five North Washington Street, and I've been living there since about September of nineteen ninety-five, so I got a pretty good idea as to what the neighborhood is like. When this all got started, we received a notice in the mail saying that there was, three M was requesting a hazardous, or a permit to use it for a warehouse for non-hazardous items. That seemed pretty plain to us. Nobody got real excited. But when you look at the application, and one of the first questions that it says is, in your opinion, will the conditional use permit substantially diminish or impair property values within the immediate vicinity? And it just says, three M's answer was, building and grounds will be maintained, improvements and repairs will be made as needed. That's only addressing their side of the street. It's no regard whatsoever to the rest of us living on the other side, and three M will run a clean, low-impact operation, and I will admit, three M has been the cleanest of anybody that's been back there. Another thing I should say before I go too far, I like my job at three M. I don't have an ax to grind with them. It's one of the best places I've ever worked at, so it's, it's nothing like that. But then when you look at the notes from the hearing, again, Mr. Illichman, when he came to the meeting, he said this would be low-impact warehousing. They would not have frequent visits by semi-trailers to the site, and this is the catchy one here. They anticipated a total of twenty truck stops per day, and a majority of those would be by smaller cube-sized trucks driving between the plant and the site. When I read that, my first thought was that site didn't see twenty trucks in a day, or in a week, I'm sorry. And I went to Runnings, and I went to Cashwise, and I talked to them. Yeah, twenty would be a very high number. So if they're talking twenty trucks a day, Monday through Friday, that's a hundred trucks, plus another twenty-four on the weekends. That's a hundred and twenty-four trucks a week running around the clock. I don't see how that was low-impact. And then they also said at some future date, there might be light assembly or packaging done in the building. Well, I realize that there's no stipulation saying they can't do it, but at what point does it become an actual factory? You know, there's nobody going to be checking on it. Oh, and here's the other thing. The facility would operate twenty-four hours a day. There was no mention of that in our notice about the hearing either. Cube trucks would operate once every two hours, and they're not diesel trucks. I don't know why gas trucks are so quiet, because the ones that drive back there sure aren't. And there'd be a retaining wall on the west side of the building that serves as a noise shelter. Well, that retaining wall is about eight feet short in height and probably forty to fifty feet short in length, so all the noise that comes out of that area comes right over at the buildings. I've been out walking my dog over by Washington School in the early morning, and you can hear that noise way over there. And then this is another thing. The commission noted that Randalls had previously operated a grocery store at this location and had used the loading docks twenty-four hours a day. I don't recall that ever. Trucks would maybe show up later in the evening or show up early in the morning, but they would stay there until the next day when somebody would unload them. And I know that because my neighbor had said that he would go over and ask the truckers at the Reefer trucks to go move them and park someplace else, so we didn't have to listen to that all night. So it hasn't proved to be a low-impact from our perspective. And then less, this last summer, we signed a petition in which we asked here for the hours of the cube truck to be limited to a twelve-hour period from seven A M. to seven P M. All over-the-road semis, we asked to be brought over to the main three M campus instead of coming over there. And then we also said when three M leaves or their current lease runs out, we would ask that the conditional use permit for the warehouse be discontinued. Now, I realize that's kind of a tough sell here, but what three M has done is they reduced their hours of operation from six in the morning until five at night, which is very nice. But we were also anticipating that this would be for a short term, and eventually they'd go. I'm not going to discuss what their plans are long-term, because that'd be way out of my pay grade, but whether they leave tomorrow or not, it doesn't matter what the conditional use stays in place, even if they leave. So we're still dealing with this, even if they leave. There's no regulations on this thing whatsoever that forces them to adhere to those hours. And here's, so even though they agreed to try and limit their hours, which, again, it was nice, there's been several times in September, there was a couple instances when they came over at six thirty P M., once at five fifteen. In October, they came over at seven P M. and five ten P M. Not a big deal, but then in November, we had a stretch where they showed up at two thirty in the morning, ten ten P M., five in the morning, six fifteen P M., and twelve thirty A M. This is like within a couple-week period, so it's at their discretion to come over whenever they want. Granted, they try to keep it as minimal as they can, but if they need product, they're going to come and get it. There's no way to stop it. And like New Year's Day, they were open, too. So even on holidays, if they have the need that they're going to run, we can listen to that all weekend, or all holiday, I should say. And they do run like seven to three on Saturday morning and seven to three on Sunday morning. So Sunday morning, if you want to sit down with your coffee and watch TV, guess who's going to welcome you as a, about ten after seven. And then the loading dock starts in right away. There's been trucks, on December ninth, we had a truck show up at nine thirty P M., and obviously, the site was closed, and the driver looked lost. She was walking around up to the door, couldn't find anybody, obviously, so now she's walking out to the street, looking at the street sign with the paperwork in her hand, and she's looking around, doesn't know where to go. So I put my clothes back on and went out, well, I just leaned out the door and talked to her and explained to her that the site just closed, and that she needed to go over to the main campus. And that's part of what goes on here, as you guys were discussing, too, is that these truckers come from all different places. You know, they got a job to do, too. They don't know what's going on when they come to this site. There's been some other things. You know, like when three M first moved in, very first thing they did was change the lighting on the building from that dull yellow to these super-bright white lights, and that made all of our front yards look like a used car lot. I mean, if you had your shades open, guess what? Your room was lit up, too. I went over there and talked to them, and they changed it back right away, which was nice. The next thing was like when there's ball tournaments. People always like to park down in that corner down there behind the building. Three M put up signs saying no trespassing. That's fine. So when ball tournaments started in, and there was cars parked down there, they called tow trucks. They were within their legal right, I understand that, but the thing is, that's, it illustrates what's going on here. You have an industrial building trying to live next door to people who are just trying to live their lives or enjoy the summer, enjoy their family and kids. This is not a good fit. The next thing was the dock locks. The south dock lock was horribly noisy. You could stand in the alley, and it would sound like a car accident taking place out front of your house. This went on for a few weeks. Finally, I figured, okay, I better go say something to them, because the employees weren't talking to them. Well, they did kind of get it fixed. It was a lot better. Now it seems to be getting a little loud again, but that's something else. Employees, one of the employees had a car alarm. First time it went off, I didn't say anything about it. The second time it went off, I went inside the building, explained to him, hey, your car alarm's going off. The third time I went in there, the fourth time I went in there, and then I thought we were good for a while. Then a few months later, it goes off again. It's a stand-up forklift, and he'd always leave his keys in his pocket, and then he'd hit the fob next thing, you know, the car alarm's going off. And when you walk inside the building, you can't hear it.
No.
But we sure can. One employee had kind of a loud vehicle, and that was a little irritating in the morning, but eventually, I think he kind of got the hint, and he started parking on the other side of the building, which was very nice. And sometimes the truck speeds at which they drive around the backside of that building, it kind of leaves a little bit to desire. I don't know what the speed limit would actually be in a parking lot like that.
In a private parking?
Yeah, probably isn't any.
It's either, nothing that we could impose.
Okay. Because like the video I showed you the other day, Lisa, that one clocks at about fourteen and a half miles an hour, and tonight I caught one at just over, or right around twenty miles an hour, driving around the backside of the building, and it's like, that's a lot of speed. But that's the thing, it's a little bit of the Wild West for them. There's really nobody over there watching them. They're trying to do their job. It's an industrial, or industrial building, industrial site, doing an industrial function next to houses.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions?
How often are they parking the semis in front of your properties, and are they running it all night? Probably more in the winter time, I would assume.
That doesn't happen very often. This summer, there was a, one truck came. It was in the evening. They were repairing the lot, so he pulls up across the street from us, and I went in and explained to him that, hey, you got a guy sitting out here. So three M knew he was there, but he just stayed there overnight. I didn't realize it was illegal for him to park there overnight. Otherwise, I would call law enforcement. Trying to think here.
So how do you feel about this permit, or what we're going to recommend tonight about them not being able to drive semis in front of your property?
I'm all for it, but there's a bigger problem besides.
Right, I hear you talking about a bigger picture.
Yeah.
This is maybe step one.
Yep, and the other thing is, too, like Seventeenth going west of Washington Street, there should also be a sign put there. For some reason, once in a blue moon, a truck will decide to go take off, go down that street, over to Franklin, and then up to fourteen. I don't know why.
Okay. Do we have three M people here? Three M representatives here?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President, just for clarification, a lot of the things that Mr. Stodick had talked about were relative to the conditional use permit. That would have been a recommendation from the planning commission. This recommendation this evening is from the Safety Commission, just so we're clear.
I'd like to add, when I served on the planning commission about five years ago, none of the neighbors attended the meeting at that point in time, and we had no written or oral responses at that point in time, that I recall.
I guess my biggest concern is when we do these conditional use permits, there's no safeguard of what if it doesn't work out? You know, what if we agree to this, and it seems like it's there forever? What is the end game if it doesn't work out? And do we need to talk about that at some point?
Well, one of the things I heard from him is that three M has been very workable when they have met with them, so, and they're a great employer in our community. They've been around a long time. I'd be willing to bet that if, at some point, we sit down to them and say, here's what we're hearing concerns from our citizens about X, Y, and Z, that they'll step up and do what they can. I mean, they obviously can't, if a driver's coming in from out of town, I mean, I don't know how they, and I, that's the part that I think is going to be tough to resolve.
I know, I know management has talked to Mr. Stodick, and they have talked to myself, too, because I work for three M also.
Right.
And, you know, they say, you know, say they're going to try and work something out or do some good, but they don't really have control of when other trucks, if they order in a truck to come in, you know, and say you're going to drop here, and say if they're early, you know, every trucker wants to get in and get out, or different capacities, you know.
I would assume they can still talk to their vendors to some extent, but they, as far as compliance, it's going to be.
Yeah.
At least they can maybe send a message, I would guess.
Another issue is, you know, when the planning commission did, took this, this is one of the first times we were taking a property and doing something like this, unique like this in our community, you know, and.
And when is that five-year lease up? How long have they been up?
I don't know that information.
It's got to be coming up, I would think. May we get a report on that, Chris, next time, just when that lease is coming up?
But it's my understanding, even if the lease goes up, that conditional use permit stays intact with that building, and three M can come and go.
Mr. President, Counselor Fisher is absolutely right. The conditional use permit is not tied to the duration of this lease.
Correct.
And it's something I think that, you know, the commission and the council needs to have in mind in the future with these requests, that once it is granted, it's in place, and it's going to stay that way. And if you have conditions, you know, no one knows exactly how it's going to be operated until it's actually being used, but, and I think with this situation, maybe people anticipated, or they weren't looking at all of the noise going in the back of the building, assuming more would be in the front.
Yeah, you think all that space in the front.
Right, which would be by roadway, which is not residential. So if they violate any aspects of the law, and I don't really think anything like that is going on, it's just something where it's difficult in a residential neighborhood. And I've had a number of phone calls with Mr. Stodick, and he was really a model citizen. He was getting his point across, but he was very polite, courteous, just trying to see what could be done. I know he's tried to work with three M, and three M has tried to work with him. But it's a difficult situation. I think if the street were to be posted, that perhaps the message would get across. I'm not sure what the signage would be. Not all of the trucks are semi-trucks. I don't know that it would be an issue, but a truck in Minnesota is anything that is used to transport, could be transporting property. That could include a Ford Ranger, Chevy S-ten, the garbage trucks, you know, so, again, I think if the point is to try and keep the commercial traffic at least off of Washington Street, posting it, I'm assuming would accomplish that. I would think three M would get the word out.
I guess I have a question for you, Roger. Is it possible that the city could take a look at removing the conditional use permit?
Without the cooperation of the landowner. Uh, without the cooperation of the landowner, I think that would be difficult and at this point in time, you know, I'm not sure why they would want to do that, you know, until we ask, but if they've received it, it applies to this property, so, you know, it's pretty hard to, to pull it unless there would be, you know, some really serious violations that would be going on and nothing like that is the case that I'm working.
Well, I think that this is a good first step and I think we probably need to continue to monitor that, you know, what's going on there and making sure that they are complying with it. So I'll offer the resolution to waive the reading to establish the no truck traffic on Washington Street between Sixteenth and Seventeenth North Street.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to offer the resolution, waive the reading. Any more discussion? CNN Finance Director, please call a roll.
Just a second here. New software. Lisa, or Counselor Fisher, sorry.
Yes.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
President Schmitz?
Yes, motion carries. Item 6A, consider motion approving the Johnson Park Renew Design Concepts and Order Construction Documents. Tom?
Tom Schmitz, Park and Recreation Department. President Schmitz and Counselors, you have before you the latest conceptual sketches of the Johnson Park Renew project. Both the Johnson Park Subcommittee and the Renew Oversight Committee have recommended that you approve these concepts and order construction documents be drafted.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions or Tom?
I think we've talked about this quite a bit in the past. I'm gonna go ahead and offer the motion and move this forward.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any more discussion?
I'm just gonna add, Lisa and myself attended both the, the meetings in December for the, representing for the Renew and we had good conversations and working with the community and the committee with putting these together. So we feel pretty strong about moving forward.
Okay, thank you.
What's the timeline again, Tom?
Uh, design this winter and construction this coming summer, to complete construction before Christmas of this year.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Better motion and a second, I take it? No more discussion? On paper, say hi.
Hi.
Both know, motion carries.
Thank you.
Item 6B, consider motion authorizing the city manager to sign an application, applicable documents and to move forward with the city manager recruitment process, including a position profile, job description, and timeline. Go ahead, Gary.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to be here with you this evening. Uh, my name is Gary Wires. I work for DDA Human Resources. My role and my purpose for being here tonight, my role is to assist the city with the hiring of your next city manager. That process has been going on for approximately the last month. I have met with council members individually to hear from you all about what it is you're looking for, attributes, that sort of thing. Met with your leadership staff as well as a group and we've been gathering a significant amount of information about the community, the organization, and the area. And tonight I'm here to seek your approval to move forward with the process. The next step in the process is to begin advertising the position, which I anticipate will commence tomorrow, unless there is a significant amount of changes that you have to the documents that I, that we'll be talking about tonight. Uh, unless there are significant changes, we will be ready to go forward. And first of all, I want to apologize to the mayor halfway here. I, I realized I didn't have my Herman pin on, so I'm sorry, I'm sorry about that. I appreciated that, that gift last time I was here and then I forget to wear it, so sorry about that.
There'll be a fine for that.
I know, there, there should be. I, I think that's warranted, so, but sorry about that. So in your, in your packets tonight are several different documents. The first is what I refer to as the profile document. That is the, in essence, the advertising venue that we will use to get out there in front of potential candidates for the position. So what I'm, what I'm first of all interested in hearing is if there are any modifications, suggestions, changes, et cetera, and I'll comment on a few things that I, that I discovered since this was shared with you that is in need of attention. The first is on the page organizational structure. We didn't include utilities in there and that needs to be added, so we'll add another, under city manager, we'll add another item for the utilities that we left off of that organizational structure. And then the other piece was on the last page, the position announcement page of the profile. It says salary range, one oh nine, seven eighty-two, but it doesn't say two, one thirty-three, five five six. It just has the two numbers side by side, so we need to insert the word two in there. And then the second main paragraph there, if you take action on the job description tonight, if you change the job description in any way, that's gonna change as well based on the requirements, the basic requirements or the minimum qualifications for the position. So I just point that out to you as well. So those are the things that, that I noticed since submitting this and I would be happy to hear any feedback or any concerns or changes that you all feel are necessary.
Anybody have anything on that?
I know I talked to Mr. Wires when I met with you and some of my concerns that you've implemented in here, not concerns, but wordsmithing choices on some areas and...
On the job description.
On the job description.
Yeah, and I'll get to that next to go through that.
Okay, all right, then I'll wait on that.
My thought was to first of all, see where you were at with the profile document, if you're okay with that.
Anybody have any comments on the profile?
Mr. President?
I've looked at it.
On the organizational structure, I think you need a spot for the Public Works Superintendent.
Which is not under, I mean, which is directly reports to the city manager.
Yep, good catch.
Thank you. So there'd be two additions there. One would be the utilities and the other would be public works superintendent.
I see in a lot of these public organizational structures that on top of the city council, I see the citizens of New Ulm, but it's not, I mean, it really is. I mean, it's driven from that down, but, but I've just seen that recently in a couple of different documents, but it's not a life or death issue for me, but it does show that that's how the hierarchy works, but...
Gladly add it if, if that's what you'd like.
Don't make me a difference, I mean, it's the truth.
Put it in there.
It's the truth, that's the way it is.
Put it in. Sometimes I've seen the word electorate too, so I could use that too if you want. I don't, however you wanna do it.
Okay. The desired manager attributes and manager goals, those came directly from the conversations that I had with you all when I was here, so that's the source of that information. Okay?
Mr. President, to, to the extent that you're gonna be adding information in there about the public utilities, I see that you've summarized the city budget, but there's no reference to the public utilities budget. And we have someone from the Commission here, I don't know if they think anything should be included in that, to the extent that, the scope of the size of the work that's involved? Just putting it out there, I don't know why you'd have one and not the other.
Guess my, my reaction to that would be, the reason, I mean, this is a budget that the manager is more directly responsible for than the utility budget, but if it's your desire to put that in, we certainly could.
Not a primary job function, but it is still a function.
It'd be a second set of eyes looking at the budget, you know.
Comment on it, Linda, Dick?
Linda, you have any comment?
We'll put you on the spot.
Have you seen the proposal?
The utility budget though is more of a function of the utility commission, more so than the manager. I understand that he oversees as an umbrella, but it really is a function of the utility commission and is handled basically separate than the city.
I mean, as far as the process goes, the city manager is in attendance at the budget meeting. He's not involved in the individual departmental budget meetings. He only sees that final piece that goes before the commission.
Yeah, I don't participate in that, so I just thought it, if it's not appropriate, it's not appropriate, so...
I don't think they need it to the extent that the city budget is listed here.
Sure.
Okay.
Okay, any, any other?
Anybody else have anything?
Okay, all right. Uh, the next thing then would be the job description. So in the job description, I, and this was recently redone when you did your study about three years ago, or two, two or three years ago, so it's very current and very good. There were a couple of suggestions that came from conversations that I had with counselors and then also the education and experience piece. Personally, I felt like the, the bar was a little too high for the minimum qualifications there, so you see a completely redone section there that I'd like you to consider. Obviously, it's your call what you wanna do with any changes to the job description, but, so I'll just hit, I'll just go through those real quickly. Essential job functions on the first page of the job description adds conducting performance reviews of all staff reporting to the city manager. Kind of goes without saying, but it's important to articulate it there. On the second page...
Let's stop there just for a second, my question. Conducts, is that a reality? Conducts performance reviews on all staff reporting to the city manager? All staff?
Reporting to the city manager.
Report to the city manager.
Right.
Okay, just wanna make sure we're clear.
Right.
I'm Sean.
Yeah. Okay, so then on page two, maintains relationships, add it, adds in staff relationships as well. Maybe that was just an original oversight, but it makes very good sense to include that. Several bullets down, you see the next highlighted section, researches, analyzes, oversees, and where applicable prepares. This made it seem like the city manager was preparing all of these specifications for bids, which, which is pretty unusual. There may be cases where they do, but it's not the norm, so that language is changed to better, more accurately reflect what the city manager would do. And then the, since there is an economic development leadership position now, attends those meetings regularly of the Economic Development Authority, probably can be removed. And then under knowledge, skills, and abilities, ability to establish and maintain effective working relationships. And then the last page, under education and experience, that's the most significant change. And again, the, this is just my suggestion to you, and the reason that I'm suggesting lowering that standard a little bit is because when, when you put out there that somebody has to have the, at least five years of experience as a chief administrative officer of a city or county, similar complexity of New Ulm, I mean, you're basically eliminating potential candidates on that alone. And quite frankly, there aren't gonna be a ton of candidates that meet that specific criteria that are gonna be interested in coming here, because if they're, if they're already working in a similarly sized organization, I mean, certainly New Ulm has appeal and you have great things going on here, it's a wonderful community, but it's a lateral, it's a lateral transfer in many cases that I think is impactful. Now, so my attitude and my approach on the front end is to lower that. Now, that doesn't mean that somebody won't have that experience, but why eliminate the possibility for others? So that's the rationale for suggesting a change to the education and experience requirement. And this language actually is very similar to what the city of Mankato has, just FYI, slightly changed. So I'd be...
Me?
Yeah, I'd love to see your, or hear your feedback on the job description too.
We have a driver's license.
Oh, right, did I leave that off?
Yeah.
All right. All right, so we would also add, thanks, Shawna, requires a driver's, the, have a driver's license as well, so...
Okay.
I'll get that.
Any other big changes? There was chief administrative officer experience and we're saying, now changing that terminology to experience in a public agency involving city or county management. And I'm, I'm okay with that, I just wanted to make sure we pointed that out. So it might be like an assistant director or manager or something, but not the chief.
Right, could be a department head.
Could be a department head.
Now, the, the old language wouldn't have, wouldn't have permitted that, so...
So I'm okay with that.
Anybody have anything else?
Okay.
Sounds good.
All right, keep going then.
Go ahead.
Uh, so the next thing is, and there's, I'm not suggesting any changes, but your salary range, I did a little quick analysis of that and I, and I gave that to you in your packets as well. And it basically, in my opinion, it kind of says your salary is right where you would expect it to be in comparison to these other entities, so I'm not recommending any changes to that. You just did a study a couple of years ago, seems like you're in a good place with that salary, so, but I wanted to include that information for you nonetheless. Looks okay?
Thank you.
All right, so then the next item I just, I wanted to just kind of plant the seed on is the interview process. So this is something to just start thinking about at this point. When I'm back with you in February, or whenever the next visit is, yeah, in February, the, or in early March, when you select finalists for the position, we'll talk about all of the different components that you would like to include in the interview process, which are, there's many different ones. So again, I just, I listed a few in your packet just to start you thinking about, as we get along further in this process, that's something you're gonna wanna figure out and then we'll put that, you know, we'll put that process together based on the wishes of the council at that point, so. And there's no right or wrong answers to that and I'm not gonna come in here and tell you how you should do the interview process. Now, I will advocate for certain components of the interview, but a lot of that is just your choice as a council. You know your community, you know the culture here and, and we'll build it around that. So, any questions or comments on that? I just wanted, again, just to mention that here tonight. Okay?
Good.
All right, great. So the last thing I'm interested in, you saw in the profile document, a couple of key dates. So I will, the process itself, the position will be posted starting tomorrow. There's only a few changes that will need to be made based on tonight's direction from you. Uh, it'll be posted until February sixth.
And talk about where you post that.
Yeah, so, um, that's posted on the League of Minnesota Cities, Association of Minnesota Counties. We send emails out to all of the cities, city and county managers in Minnesota that belong to this Minnesota City Management, City County Management Association. We do advertising, the league equivalent in North Dakota, South Dakota, Iowa, and Wisconsin. We send it to alumni of Hamlin University, University of Minnesota, and St. Cloud State, and Mankato State, or, yeah, whatever. MS, what is it called now? Mankato, Minnesota State. Sorry, sorry, I'm locked into my, my history here, so, um, yeah, so those four institutions have public administration master's programs, so they send it out to their students and alumni on our behalf. And then we also do advertising on LinkedIn. And then the, another one is the ICMA, which is the International City County Management Association. That's a, that's kind of a go-to for anybody around the country that's looking for a city manager position. And I can guarantee you that you will get out-of-state applicants for this position and that's kind of the venue to get at those people as well. So those are the ones that come to mind. There may be one or two others that are part of the advertising.
And part of the contract with us is that's a fee that you absorb as part of your...
Yes, there's no, there's no additional charge for any of the services that I will provide you. It's all part of the base agreement that I have with you, yes.
Okay.
Yes. So after it closes, I will do an initial screening of the candidates. Yes. So after it closes, I will do an initial screening of the candidates, get the group down. Let's say there's 30 candidates. I'll get it down to about a dozen or so. That number varies based on the candidate group. Those people will be assigned a video interview, short video interview, and a personality index. When that part is done, those links to all that information will be forwarded to the council. You will then have an opportunity to watch those, those short video interviews that each candidate has done, review the personality information. I will then come to a council meeting, at which point you will pick people from that group that you want to bring in for the final interviews. And then prior to the final interviews, we'll do the background work on all the people, credit history, civil court history, criminal history, check references, verify employment education, all that kind of thing is done in advance of the final interviews. So when you get to the final interviews, you're going to have all kinds of information, but you're going to have everything you need to move forward with the process. So that's the process in a nutshell. I'm really kind of flying through that. But I do a couple of dates of interest. One is March 5th. That is a, I believe that's a regular council meeting night for you. That would be when I would come here, like right, like we're here tonight, and it gets a little, that part's a little quirky, because the law says that these candidate, these candidates are private at that point in the process. So, but you all have to pick them in a public meeting. So how do we do that? We do it with a numbering system. So you're going to have, you're going to know the numbers, you know, who's, who's candidate number one, and I am, but no one else will, which is awkward, I know, but that's how we have to do it. You then pick from that group. That would be on March 5th. So that's really important. If that's a date where there's conflicts amongst council members, it would be good for us to talk about that now, because it's really important from my perspective to have as many, if not all of you, present for that. And then the interviews also, the dates that are just put in there now in the timeline are March 26th and 27th. Again, that would be important for you all to be there for those dates. So that's my comments about timelines, so.
It becomes public after March 5th, after we say we're going to pick candidate 1, 7, and 9, or whatever?
Yes, yes, then immediately...
Immediately after that meeting, or after that vote, or that, then it becomes...
Yep, then the identity of the candidates becomes known.
Okay.
Yes. Once they're picked for interview with the, the statute says with the appointing authority, when you're chosen to interview with the appointing authority, which is you all, when you're, when that happens, it becomes public.
Okay.
Anybody else have any questions, or Gary?
We haven't talked about, or is it down the road when we talked a little bit more about what that public meet and greet would look like, and so that's not where we're going to deal with it?
No, we don't need to. You know, that'll, that's one of those options that you can, you know, say at that, when I'm here in March, you know, this is what we want to do for that meet and greet, because there's all kinds of different ways to do that as well.
Yeah, I'd like to hear, get some input from you on what you've done in the past, what's worked well.
Yep, we talk about that.
Shawna, are we missing anything from your city side of things?
I think so.
Okay, we're good to go? All right, just double checking.
So that's really all that I have for this evening.
Is it a motion item as well?
Yes.
Okay.
We'll need a motion.
I'll go ahead and offer the motion to sign any applicable documents and to move forward to the city manager recruitment process, including the position profile, the job description, and timeline.
Second. We have a motion in a second. Any more discussion? Seeing none? On paper, say aye.
Aye.
Pos, no? Motion carries. Thank you, Gary.
Okay, thank you all. Appreciate it.
Thank you. We'll go ahead. Item 7A, consider motion authorizing the city manager to proceed with the process of acquiring a 2019 replacement equipment and propose, or proposed as 2019 city budget.
Being that the money is available, everything was approved in the equipment revolving fund, I'll authorize the city manager to prepare specifications, secure bids or quotes, or use a state bid contract to acquire the following equipment, plan for replacement in the 2018 city budget. 2000...
19.
19.
19 budget.
It says 18.
I'll second the motion.
We got a motion in a second. Any more discussion?
Some of these are 20 years old. Some of these items are more than 20 years old.
Right.
So vehicles.
Okay. On paper, say aye.
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 Pos, no? Motion carries. Item 7B, consider motion directing staff to proceed with the performance measurement survey for the 2018 city and PUC operations according to MS 691.
Mr. President, if I could talk just real briefly on this, is that I had some conversation with Nicole about this and a few other folks that, I've had some people talk to me that it's great that what we're doing, but we're only polling 300 people out of 13,000 people, and that our, maybe our polls are too small. They're not statistically significant because they're so small. We do get a pretty good response, but that maybe we should be increasing the number of people that were actually, by quite a bit, if we want truly a good response from our city. And Nicole, do you remember, what are we getting for response, like 50%? 40%?
Um, last year we got 47%.
Yeah, so we get a really good response. Male surveys sometimes are 10, 15, 20%. So again, New Ulm does a very good job of responding, but we're only doing 75 in each ward. And when I did, so the cost, we get back $1,800, and our stamps cost about, if we do our bulk rate, from what I figured is a little over 100 bucks. So then there's the paper and the envelopes. Again, maybe another 100 bucks. The rest of it's staff labor and preparing it, and then tabulating it when we get back. So I'm just wondering if we could do more people? And then we also talked, I think, as a council in the summer about maybe rating our park system as maybe some additional questions. And I know people have other things they want to ask the general public. So what I would propose is that we maybe have staff, let us take a look at what the last survey was for questions, and then figure out some way that we could rate half the parks or something. And I don't know if anybody else has anything else that they would like to take a look at as far as asking our general public on how we're doing. We seem to cover, part of the statute requires that we cover the areas that we're covering, but I know like under the cable television, I brought that up, that there's a question about what, how do you feel about how the cable television network's doing? And, but you don't know if they're talking about the programs that are on New Cat, or are they talking about the quality of the videos? You don't really know based on the question. So there's a couple areas that maybe we can break out and fix a little bit, and I'd be willing to take a little bit more time and take a look at that. I don't know about the, how we would rate parks, but I'm sure there's a way we can get a grid and people, how often do they visit, and what are the, how do they rate it, or what are their top five parks, or something of that nature. But I wanted to bring that up tonight since some, you know, several people said, you realize you're only doing very small, small number.
I agree we're only doing small numbers, but we're doing it every year. So we are reaching a lot of people every, every year.
True.
It's not like it's just a one-time survey, but I guess I'm open to doing more if it falls within the budget, but I don't know.
I have no problem with increasing it. You know, the more people, the more responses you get, the better.
We'd see more trends, maybe.
I think it's better, but I think maybe relating to your question, if we'd have the city manager go and talk to the department heads, give them a list of the questions that are in the survey, maybe the department heads would have ideas or come up with questions that they'd like to have answers to, too. I don't know.
Maybe, yeah.
That would help, too. I mean, just, before we send it out, let's review it a little bit, you know, and come back and...
We have a little bit of time. We don't have tons. We have to submit our report by July 1st, right, Nicole? That's what I saw in the...
Including the resolution.
So we have to come in front of us. We have to approve it.
The deadline would probably be made just to make sure that we've got everything, and the resolution, everything to the state in time.
But we have a little bit of time here to play with this.
But there are, there's 10 required performance measurements that have to be included in the survey. Last year's survey had 16 questions on it, and they, they cover all those departments and those performance measurements, and they, mostly those questions just ask for what you think of the overall quality of a certain department or a certain aspect of the city, so.
Yeah, I think what we do is a good survey, but, and we don't want to make it too long, so people just fold it up, throw it in the garbage. 16 questions is pretty quick.
Is there any way we can do a mail and then also a email, or an, either email or some kind of internet type?
That's something we could probably look into for this year.
You know, if we want to increase...
Yeah, this year I think it'd probably be a little late to figure out what that process would be, something we can look at for next year, because I know we, we take all that data and we input it into a system that IT has created, and that's how we tabulate all that information together. But it is something that we can look into probably for, for next years, but this year, if you, you know, if you want to increase it, we can do that. And then if you want to take a look at the survey after we add a couple of questions, you know, we do have, I would say, no more than a, than a month kind of wiggle room to get that approved and mailed out, because we usually give the residents about three to four weeks to return that back to us. And then it takes about a month for us to tabulate everything, and then bring it back to council, that first meeting in June for you guys to adopt the resolution and everything, so we can get it to the state on time.
Not a lot of leeway.
Yeah. What do people feel would be an appropriate number? I heard, I heard 250 from each ward, which would give us 1,000 responses. Out of those 1,000, then you're going to maybe get 500, or 400.
Or 400.
Is that doable?
I guess that's a Nicole question.
I don't have anything to do with it, honestly.
Who does the tabulating?
Lisa does.
Lisa does, huh?
So we have one person that does it.
And even that can maybe tabulate a little bit different. Like we do each individual response, where we probably wouldn't have to do that with that many. We could, you know, tabulate some of the, because some things are just repeated over and over and over again.
What if we just try 500? You know, go from three to five. 1,000 would be quite a bit of a jump.
We're not going to get 1,000. We're going to get...
I know we won't, but...
Well, we can, we can increase it once here to 500, and see what the results, see how many people do get more back or not. Then we can always adjust then for 2020.
Are you going to increase it to an even number for each ward?
Need an even number if we're going to do four wards.
500 is going to be an odd number, but what are we doing, 100 from?
125 each.
125.
So 50 more per word, ward.
So how many were you thinking?
It was 500. He was, Charlie threw out 500.
You can't do five with four wards.
125.
Sorry.
I didn't get that either.
It's been a long day. All right, I can, I can live with that. I was hoping for more, but it's a start. But I just think if you want a statistically response, even 500 doesn't really give you a real taste. 1,000 might give, show you more better trends, because again, you're only getting 400 responses out of 13,000 people. And the real cost is your stamps. And you're getting bulk rate stamps, 30 some cents a stamp. It's, you know, your postage costs and paper costs are a couple hundred dollars. So it's the labor cost of, of...
It's still the staff time to put it together.
It does take staff time. It does.
Quite a bit.
Yep. But I, I'll live with 500. Maybe I'll bug you again next year.
See how 500, yeah, see how 500 goes.
So would it make sense to offer a motion to table this and have staff bring it back?
Yeah, it would be the first meeting in February, we'd bring it back with the...
Okay, I'm going to offer a motion to table this item for additional information.
Second. We got a motion in a second. Table it. Any more discussion? Seeing none? On paper, say aye.
Aye.
Pos, no? Motion carries. Item 7C, consider motion authorizing a nomination to Herman Monument as a national historic landmark. Mr. Schmitz.
Thank you, President Schmitz and counselors. This is an opportunity to have Herman Monument apply for a nomination to the federal government that has a program through the Department of Interior and the National Park Service called Historic Landmark Status. And both, all three commissions, the Park and Recreation Commission, the Monuments and Cemeteries Commission, and the Heritage Preservation Commission have recommended that you authorize this nomination process. We have a historian, a professional historian consultant willing to assist us with the process. The cost for that would be $4,000, and we have that covered with a $2,000 donation from the Herman Monument Society, and $2,000 coming from the Heritage Preservation Commission budget. This is just one more straw in the hat, so to speak, for Herman Monument, a little bit higher elevation than on the National Registry of Historic Places where he already sits, and may provide opportunities for additional grant funding in the future for the multimillion dollar restoration that we're all anticipating.
One thing, Tom, if you want to mention the timeline, we talked about it a couple of the meetings, how long this actually takes.
Yes, and we also have to wait for the federal government to open their doors back up, because the National Park Service is closed with the federal government shutdown. And so this could be, I mean, I think locally we'll get our, our paperwork completed and the report done within a matter of a half a year. But then it goes to Washington DC, and it could be a year or two before we hear back from them. So I would recommend you authorize this nomination and we move the process forward.
I'll go ahead and move that.
Second. We got a motion in a second. Any more discussion? Seeing none? On paper, say aye.
Aye.
Pos, no? Motion carries. Thanks, Tom.
Thank you.
Item 7D, consider motion award bids for the Recreation Boiler Replacement Project to ISG in amount of $58,470. Go ahead, Tom.
Thank you, President Schmitz and counselors. This is an opportunity to move forward with the design process of the boiler system replacement project for the Recreation Center. We're recommending, staff is recommending going with the, the low bid of two local qualified bids to ISG out of their Mankato office for $58,470. And the boiler systems, we have two of them there now, 40 years old, have gone beyond their lifespan, and the new system will be much more efficient and complementary to the building, and potentially the addition to the south of the indoor water park. We do have some experts here if you have any technical questions. Otherwise, I would recommend you authorize us to engage a contract with ISG and begin the design process.
You know, being a billing official and a facilities maintenance supervisor, they have put a lot of time into it, met with these individuals, sent out the RFPs, and we're only moving forward with the design phase. We're not ordering in the million-dollar project. I'll move to award the bid for the Recreation Center Boiler Replacement Project Design and Bidding Construction Administration, ISG, in the amount of $58,470.
Second. We have a motion in a second. Any more discussion?
We need to move forward. These are 40-year-old boilers, and I appreciate the email that you sent out before about what would happen if these boilers would just die on us, and especially in the middle of the winter, what kind of a mess we would have, and the costs would be to our taxpayers, so.
Yes, the budgetary line number one.
We still have an obligation to maintain our buildings.
It is.
And if we're not getting a plan in place, we're not moving forward, so.
All right. Any more discussion? None? On paper, say aye.
Aye.
Pos, no? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Item 7E, consider contributor to Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities Environmental Action Fund.
President Schmitz, counselors, this is a voluntary fund assessment that we can assess ourselves. We've contributed to this fund for the past couple of years, and basically this is the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities advocating, you know, the legislature for wastewater plants, water quality regulations on cities' behalf, so we have a voice up at the state capitol. And we split this with the PUC, so if you do approve this action, we'll take it before the PUC to get their approval for their half. And if they deny it, then we won't move forward with this voluntary assessment.
And the amount is $2,369.50.
And is this the third year that we've done this now?
Yeah.
At least yet.
Fourth, this will be the fourth year.
For the fourth year.
Fourth year.
I'll offer the motion to authorize the commitment to be sent to the CGMC in the, in the payment of $2,390, or three, $2,369.50.
Second. We have a motion in a second. Any more discussion? Seeing none? On paper, say aye.
Aye.
Pos, no? Motion carries. Item 7F, consider motion authorizing the use of renewed funds to acquire engineering and drafting services for soil boring to design the first base right field observation deck at Johnson Park.
All right, again...
Which one are you guys?
I'll start it out. So the New Ulm Baseball Association has come before Parks and Rec, you know, the Renew Committee for an observation deck being built along the right field line, first base, to accommodate potential visitors for the 2020 state tournament. Nuba originally got an original, an estimate, approximately $80,000 to construct that. What we would like to do with the Johnson Field... What we would like to do with the Johnson Field portion is use the renew, see if it'll fit within the million dollar renew budget. So what we are asking today is authorization for around $8,000 to be used from the current Johnson Field renew budget to get the engineering construction done by the vendor, because it is an additional cost that wasn't part of the initial RFP that went out for the Johnson Field project. So it'd be 5,800 for design work and approximately $2,000 for soil boring, so we know what we're dealing with under, under where we want the structure. If it does come back as not part, being too expensive, going outside of the renew budget, it will come back to city council for you to decide where, if you want to fund the project, how you want to fund the project, because it's not a budgeted item for 2019. In addition to the deck, we will have to move the Johnson Field scoreboard, which will be roughly about $5,000 additional cost to the city to move that scoreboard as well, because the deck will be sitting where the scoreboard is, so that will have to be moved. And currently, Johnson capacity is about 1,600. When I talked to New Prague, who held the tournament last year, their highest attended game was opening day at 600 attendees, so currently, as the stadium sits, we do have the capacity to hold the increased capacity.
Tom?
One additional tidbit would be that if you authorize this to be designed and bid out with the Renew Johnson Park bid package, it would be bid out as an add alternate. So the cost of the deck would be known and would be a separate number than the other infrastructure improvements with the Johnson Renew project. So you can make a decision later on whether or not it fits into the scope of paying for it through renew or other means. We're just talking about the design, and then your thoughts about it also.
I think that's a great way to do it.
Yeah, I guess I agree. That would be the way I would recommend going is put it in with the renew project and separate bid on it and see how it comes out, and we really don't know where we are with all of our renew projects anyway yet, so...
Estimates is all, but...
We can always make a decision yet.
Correct.
I have a question for our city attorney, this is all, we're doing this legitimately, or is this an add-on to the renew project?
Right, I think this would be within the scope of what the work was authorized for Johnson Park. As I understood the original plan, we were losing 172 seats, and now we're adding seats, that's the part that kind of eludes me as far as, but legally, I think it's...
Yes, the legislation simply states improvements to Johnson Park grandstand.
Well, we did have a dollar, an estimated amount for Johnson Park, and if these bids come in way over, then we're going to have to decide how much do we want that.
Correct.
Well, it's being bid as an alternate, so we don't accept the alternate, you don't accept the alternate.
Exactly.
And, Tom, we had, when we started the renew projects, we were anticipating about $1 million for Johnson.
That's what I remember, it's a million.
Correct. So, I mean, you know, bottom line is, you know, if it comes in and we're at $1,030, or, you know, we have to choose to, do we want to...
Right.
We have to do, it's a give or take, it's a sacrifice.
It's a give or take for another project.
You know, do you want to cut it or not? Right now, this is about making a complete plan for the park. You know, my understanding, 20 years ago when the Civic Center was built, you know, you had plans, but some cuts had to be made, you know, so right now, we're doing remodeling to that facility. So, we're early in the stage right now that we can at least plan for it, and then we can discuss how we're going to pay for it at a later date, so...
I think, yeah, it's, it's a kind of looking at the broad scope, and what would we really want, and we would like to see that down there, we may not be able to afford it, but at least we'll have the knowledge of that, and it's not going to cost us a ton of money to get that.
Let's hope they come in right.
With that being said, I'll authorize the use of renewed funds to acquire engineering and drafting services and soil boring to design a first base right field observation deck at Johnson Park.
Second.
We have a motion in the second, any more discussion? Seeing none, on favor say aye.
Aye.
Posse no, motion carries. Thank you. Item 7G, consider motion authorizing the Park and Recreation Department to obtain quotes for the design and engineering of the right field observation deck at Miller Park.
Chris?
So again, this is pretty much the same scenario, the only difference is there's no renew money available for this, this is really going to all come from unbudgeted money for, from the city. I had talked with Tom, and we do have, you know, between $5,000 to $6,000 available in the Parks and Rec budget to do the engineering for this.
How much was that again?
Between $5,000 to $6,000, you know, kind of the same estimate from, as the Johnson one. So we do have some city funds available to do the engineering, and then the construction, there will be essentially, it's not a budgeted project, so it will come before you again to see how we would pay for that, if you did want to move forward with the construction of it.
This one I have a little bit more of an issue with, because I think we knew that this was maybe going to come up in 2019, and it wasn't budgeted. And I think that, that's kind of a, I think it should have been budgeted, it should have been something we should have been able to decide on in the budget to, to fund that, you know, when we did our budget. So I guess I'm not sure how I feel about moving forward with this.
I know we do have the New Ulm Baseball Association folks here that wanted to chat, but I have a discussion point, there's some...
Sir, I'd like to add, President Schmitz and councilors, this proposal for the Miller Park Observation Deck came from the New Ulm Baseball Association, it did not come from staff. Staff is here to help explain it and provide options for you, but this was a request from the association and not from the city.
I'd like to add, you know, at one of our meetings, I met with one of the members from the New Ulm Baseball Association, and they were discussing some options, you know, they might be short cash to pay for the project, you know, if we could be creative and maybe we give them a loan, and then they would repay it, you know, in anticipation, you know, if they go with their tournament, that they make X amount of dollars, and then that's how they would repay this, you know, so, right now, it's up for discussion, you know, if you want to get a plan, and then come back at a later date and work with, you know, the organization in regards.
Yes, so the question this evening is whether or not to authorize the design and the bidding. When we open bids, we will bring them to you for a decision on whether or not you want to proceed with construction, and if so, how.
The preliminary estimate according to our paperwork is 25,000 to 40,000, correct?
That's my understanding.
You know, I've had some discussions with the baseball people and whatnot, and I'm just catching it right now, is this ADA compliant?
Are any decks compliant?
No, this...
This will be an elevated deck with staircases to it.
So it's not ADA compliant?
Correct. My understanding is that there are plenty of other viewing areas in the park that are ADA compliant, and that this one...
I disagree with that, being a building official dealing with ADA. We're constructing something new, it has to be available to, for ADA standards, not that, well, you people are more than capable of going up the steps, you people in the wheelchair, you have to go over there. I disagree with you, Tom.
I think if it's new construction, I think potentially it's an issue, I'd like to have Mr. Zabel's comment on it.
ADA will trump that with the steps, I, I'm positive on that. I just caught it now, and I'm looking, wait a minute, it's not a ramp.
Yeah, I think, I think we've had conversations with the building official, but I don't have, you know, his exact opinion on that with me.
And I don't, I don't know how many people you would anticipate, I'm not seeing that in the materials.
The size?
Yeah, the capacity now is 790, and the largest attendance last year was 600.
Yeah.
We've already got 190 more than what they had. How many more would you be looking at?
Um, I don't know what... For a deck, that's, for the observation deck, you're probably looking at about, between, I'd say between 75 and 100 people, but that's really cramming them in there, you know. Sitting at the drink rail, or standing on the rails on both platforms comfortably, I mean, that's, I would say, probably about 50 people extra, you know, additional slots.
The dimensions are 16 feet by 30 feet.
Yeah, so...
Bi-level elevated deck.
Yep.
I don't know if you have any, if you want to hear from the president of the association, or...
Yeah, maybe that's the next step.
And I'm, I'm not against the platform, I just wanted to, not that you take this out for bid, well, and the architect's going to say, well, you got to spend another $12,000, this has got to be ADA.
Yeah, that detail will certainly be researched and finalized before we would proceed.
Mr. President, councilors, my name is Bob Skillings, I live at 36 Woodland Drive, I'm the president of the New Ulm Baseball Association. The deck at Miller Park would be an extra, so to speak, add some character to Miller Park. There could be games during the state tournament where we would go beyond our capacity, and it depends upon, you know, who's playing in those games. But we would, we would view this as an add-on to the park, to add some character. The New Ulm Baseball Association has a long tradition of helping the city to fund things at both of our parks. In fact, in this picture, you see the roof of the concession stand, and back in the day when New Ulm Baseball Association had the funds, we basically paid for the construction of that concession stand. And it would be our, I guess, we would be interested in sharing the revenue that we're going to get from the 2020 state tournament to help fund these extras. Of course, we don't have the money in the bank right now, but it would be our intention to turn those monies over to the city to help fund those things.
So have you thought, I mean, has your committee been specific enough to say, so right now you don't have any money in your account to kick over for this at all?
Well, we, we do have some money in the account, yes.
But you haven't decided as a committee to how, if you could release any of those funds to help pay for the design project on this?
Right, we haven't, we haven't voted on that.
And then has your committee talked about, you have this tournament, and there's some positive revenue, that 50% of the revenue, whatever, is going to go to help pay back a portion of this if we were to vote for this?
Our, our intention would be to pay back all of it over, over...
Expenses.
Time that we could have the revenue.
And if that was not enough to pay for the cost, then what, is the, did your association talk about, say it brings in 30,000, but the cost of this project is 40, we're still 10,000 short, what...
I think we, I think over time we could, we could come up with the rest of that.
So would we want to contract with, with them, Roger, if you're, what's your thoughts on that?
Well, none of this is on the agenda for tonight.
Okay.
And frankly, I would, I would want to research this. I've got some concerns about the city loaning money in this fashion, and obviously we have a revolving loan fund, we are authorized to do it for specific purposes, whether or not that includes the baseball association and this project, which is ultimately on city property, that's all another matter. So I'd probably want to see something a little more specific as far as what the proposal is.
The revolving loan fund actually wouldn't cover this type of project.
Okay, right, that's...
It would, it would have to be a loan from the city, just loaning out money from the reserves or something like that, but we don't have a mechanism in place currently to fund the project.
But I would have an interest in doing that if we have some, something in writing saying that the baseball association's going to pay us back for the expenses.
And I'm going to agree with Roger on this, we're acting ahead of something that'll come back to us. Tonight's just authorizing the Park and Rec to obtain quotes, obtain, not even award, obtain.
So what's, what's that going to cost us, though?
It'll probably be around 5,800 or so.
We'll just get the numbers.
Yeah.
But then, you know...
Chris says we do have the money available to do it if we want to proceed with just, just part of it.
Engineering and stuff.
But I think it's good for the association to hear some concerns that we have, and they could take that back to their group and...
Well, would we ask the association maybe to consider then repay back the engineering services and also on top of the cost of the deck?
Oh, I think, yeah.
You know?
In fact, Mr. President, in light of the fact that there's some concerns about ADA compatibility, which I think could affect your decision overall on this.
Right, yeah.
And before you authorize spending 5,800, maybe if we were to just continue this for two, well, until the next meeting, or meeting again next week, if we could get a report from Mr. Zabel...
Good idea.
Yeah, so we're just double checking, basically, and I would go with that.
Let's table the one other one, I'll table, I'll offer a motion to table this action for further information till the next meeting.
Second.
We have a motion in the second table, any more discussion? Seeing none, on favor say aye.
Aye.
Posse no, motion carries. Thank you. Item 7H, consider a resolution approving the aesthetics standards policy for small wireless facilities located in public right-of-ways in the city of New Ulm. Go ahead, explain that with me.
Dave Snowbruck, Community Development Director. The League of Minnesota Cities has notified Minnesota cities that the Federal Communications Commission is proceeding with the implementation of policies for small cell, or small wireless facilities. And if you're curious what we're talking about, it's something that looks like, as you see on the screen.
I was thinking something on the ground, okay.
Yeah. Now, cities that wish to enforce aesthetic standards are supposed to have those policies in place and published by January 14th, so we're dealing with a limited amount of time. City of New Ulm currently does not have any policies or ordinances that regulate small wireless facilities or actually any activities within the right-of-way area. Now, by April 15th, we're supposed to also, that's another important date in which we are supposed to have standards that comply with the FCC policies. And so what we're looking at in, by adopting this policy, is kind of a bridge, or it's an interim step to get us to having an ordinance. And so it would be our intent that, following the adoption of the policy, that we would proceed to prepare an ordinance for this purpose. In addition, we would be looking at having a separate white, right-of-way ordinance. Now, I might note that the policy that you have before you has been taken from other communities, one from the state of Minnesota, one from outside of the state. I might also note that to date, we have not received any requests to install these type of facilities in New Ulm. I might note that the one that I showed you was from the city of Austin, though, and I've been told that the city of Mankato also has many of these. Apparently, the installation of these types of facilities in, in areas where you have a lot of data being exchanged, and that's around college campuses, high schools, you know, those types of locations. We would look at the adoption of this policy as kind of being similar to the complete streets policy that the council previously adopted. So a policy is an effective mechanism, and kind of gets us then to that April 15th date. Do you have any questions?
Mr. President, to maybe add some further explanation, what Mr. Snowbruck is saying is we've really got these two deadlines. We've got January 15th to publish, according to the FCC... We've got January 15th to publish, according to the FCC, what they describe as aesthetic standards. The concern in the cellphone industry is that every individual community is saying all of your antennas have to be green or blue, or they can't look like this, or they have to look like that. So they're trying to at least get cities to commit to reasonable standards, and these are aesthetics having to do with appearance. And as far as publishing it, what the proposal would be if this is approved, is prior to the 15th, we would publish once just a notice to the public, to the companies, that these standards exist, where they can find them, and then we would comply with that deadline. By April 15th, we're hoping to be able to present to you something that would be in effect by then, published by then, that would deal more thoroughly with fees for putting in these towers, other requirements, and also deal with the right-of-way management in the city of New Ulm as well. And I know Dave and staff have been working on those, I've had a number of meetings with them on those as well. But just to try and get this in by the 15th, so at least we can be covered by that requirement, we would urge the council to agree to adopt this resolution.
I'll offer the resolution, waive the reading.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, offer resolution, waive the reading, any more discussion? Seeing none, Finance Director, please call a roll.
I'm getting her. Can't check the box. Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
President Schmitz?
Yes, motion carries. Item 7I, consider motion approving the request on the Lamp Lider Bar and Grill regarding the first annual Arctic plunge.
They should get an automatic approval, approval just for sitting here for an hour and a half, staying awake, huh? So this request has come in, they would like to close off Minnesota Street, right by the Keisling, Keisling House to Second Street, from about 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM for tear-down and setup for their Arctic plunge event. They will not be extending their liquor license to the public right-of-way, but they are gonna utilize their catering license to serve food and alcohol in a VIP section that will be sectioned off, so really, only people in the VIP area will be able to have alcohol that they will be dispensing, and also be serving food. The VIP tents will be for gold and platinum sponsors, they figure about eight to 10 of those, the rest of the public will be out in the bleacher, bleacher section. There is a mistake on the, on the issue sheet, the, originally, they, they thought the VIP tents would be able to serve alcohol and beverage on their own, but that is not the case. Lamp Lider is using their catering license to serve the alcohol and the food to the VIP tent area. They've been in contact with the police department, the fire department, and Public Works already, and they're gonna use the benefit, the benefit of this, there'll be, will be the fire department, the OC, or the food shelf, and the Humane Society are gonna be the benefactors essentially of this event.
Tell us about what you're planning.
Our object is, is that, well, we did this up north, and we had the, we owned the bar up north back in 2002, and we did it for 10 years. So the object is the VIP tents, they pay a sponsor fee, and that, and then, along with that, each jumper has to pay $100 to jump in.
Okay, and what do they jump into?
They jump into the, the fireman's holding tank.
Okay.
And that, and then with that idea, we also have shirts, sweatshirts, which we have from the sponsors, which we'll be selling there for the first few weeks in February and all that, and that money will be used to ra, to give to the fire department, the food shelf and that. The last, when we started this in 2002, it was for 9/11 and that, and then, back then, that one went for the Red Cross and all that stuff. Then from there, we, we formed it, and we did it for the local organization. The last year, we had it, we raised $29,000 for the deal, and that was in a lot smaller area. It was on the lake, but the lake at certain couple years could not hold the people and all that, because the DNR wouldn't allow, because the lake wasn't safe, so we moved it to the parking lot. So that's what we figured down here would be a good situation for the businesses in town and everything like that.
Could I have you state your name for the record?
My name is Herb Knutson, and then I'm part owner in the Lamp Lider, and this is James Stenquist, and that.
Well, it's a wonderful new event idea, concept for our community, so I appreciate that, you're bringing that, and is it a rule that the mayor has to be the first one to jump, or?
Uh-huh.
Sure.
Are you gonna heat the water pump before you bring it?
That was my question, we're gonna have a heated drop tank, correct?
What if it's like five below, or let her go?
The first year I jumped, I was the only jumper, and then in 2002, we raised 5,500, and we were, I was a nine feet of water.
Oh.
And that, and the water, don't get me wrong, was cold, it's just like needles hitting you at that time, and that, so, but you remember the experience and everything like that.
Do they go right in into a heating tent, or I'm assuming?
We will have a tent in some deals, yep, yep, to change and all that stuff.
Sure.
Yep.
Okay.
But we've already gotten, here's some sheets you can pass.
We, we have them on.
Okay, you got those?
I think we have.
The ones for jumping? Because we wouldn't want, we would not wanna take that benefit away from you guys.
Mr. President, one, one matter, I think, just to be sure we're clear on this, I think city manager alluded to it, we've had some discussions, I've had a number of conversations with Mr. Knutson about this. The information that he provided, I think, was written before all those conversations happened. It's clear now that the, any alcohol will be distributed under his caterer's license, but he, as the licensee, will be distributing this. This will not be distributed by the people who are operating the VIP tents.
Right.
So we've got that, all right.
Right.
Sounds good.
So the alcohol has to be served inside the tent or fenced in area?
It's gonna be served at wherever he decides to have his people serving.
The VIP tent.
In wherever he decides to do.
There'll be one, one table, there'll be a, one spot there, where we'll have the liquor and that, and then in the process of it, it's fenced off, so this way, people.
So I was questioning if you had a base.
People can't take it outside the streets or ram, bring it in.
They will not have kegs in each individual tent or bars or anything.
That was one of the concerns we had of Oktoberfest from law enforcement, that, because it was, that they couldn't take alcohol out of the fenced area too, so they, they asked that we created, or asked the chamber to create a sign that said that, so right at the entrance, so people didn't take their alcoholic beverages outside of the fenced area to walk down to the next bar.
Was that before or after the last?
It was the second week, it was before the second week.
Okay, well, I'm pretty sure the second week, I saw an awful lot of people walking on the streets.
But it was probably a lot better, because they did have some very big, good-sized signs, that I'm sure has prevented some of that anyway. So maybe the chamber has it, they could borrow it or something.
And we can do that, and we also are gonna have some people at, so when they come into the VIP area, they gotta have wristbands on there. So there will be people there at, at that end, so they don't take the drinks out or vice versa, bring in a.
I guess I have one question, Herb, in regards to this, in the past, I mean, I'm just thinking out loud here, if we would need any emergency personnel for an activity like this on a city right-of-way?
I, I don't, I don't, I don't see why, and I'll honestly, you got the firemen there, and they all.
As long as they're willing to act on it, that's what I'm, I guess, that's where I'm alluding to.
I'm, I'm, which I'm really hoping is that we will get the results like we did up there, from that, I realize there's a lot more plunges than there was when, and that, but we used to, we used to get 3,500 to 5,000 people there, and we were on a lake with only 240 people, and there wasn't that many people around the area.
Okay.
And the nice part about the Arctic plunge is all the money stays in the community.
Right.
I think it's a great idea.
Yeah, I think it's great, too. I'm gonna offer a motion to approve the request from the Lamp Lider Bar and Grill regarding the first annual New Ulm Arctic plunge.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any more discussion?
Mr. President?
Yes.
Question for the city attorney, since it's use of a public right-of-way, should it be a resolution?
Oh, that would certainly be appropriate.
And I'll change it to a resolution.
We have a motion and a second, offer the resolution, waive the reading, any more discussion?
Good catch.
Seeing none, Finance Director, please call a roll.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
President Schmitz?
Yes, motion carries.
Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for, thanks for waiting.
It's painful, I know.
Item 8A, consider acceptance of a list of claims paid and approve a list of claims to be paid. Claims paid in the amount of $3,286,467.67, and to be paid in the amount of $304,174.2.
I'll move it.
Second.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, motion carries, but no more business, meeting adjourned.